Okay, I thought you were saying Ray Musket.
Meeting has come to order. Emergency manager Ann Crapp, Robert Ann Crapp, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the roll call. Mr. Clerk?
Dave Abdullah?
Here.
Thomas Berry?
Here.
Robert Coniston?
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Here.
Margaret Horvath?
Here.
Joseph Kozinski?
Here.
Ray Musket?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Clerk, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton?
I move to approve the Order of Business February 9th, 2016, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. This is revised agenda as presented.
Is there any support?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Kozinski. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Mr. Chairman? Councilman Kozinski?
Move the council approve the minutes of the last city council meeting held on January 26, 2016, as submitted.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is fund transfers and current claims.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Horvath?
I move that the council approve current claims 6-1 through 6-29.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Mr. Chair? Councilman Musket?
I had some questions on a lot of these, but I called Director Zimmer, and he was kind enough to give me some of his time and explain to me on how things work. And I understand how things work, but it's hard for me to vote on something like 6-12 when we pay $16,076.99 from water for fuel. If they could show me that the other departments pay for their share out of this, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but will never see it. Are we ever going to see a transfer from one account from water back to the department that's using the fuel? I don't know who's using what. It's just a blanket of $16,000 for fuel, and if I don't know who's using the fuel, I don't know how I can approve it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor?
Yeah, we, there is a, in the accounting department, because what really generates a lot of control, but generates a lot of control for all of it, is we get monies, Act 51 monies, from the state for highway. So, a system has been put into effect, and it's existed since day one of the municipality in which tickets are, work tickets are assigned. So, costs are allocated on a materials and an individual basis. Am I correct? So consequently, if at some point, if you would like, that particular system, or if the new council members would both like to, and existing council members, we'd be more than happy to show that to you. But it's the accumulation of these particular charges that get their allocation, but it's the control, because we cannot charge one department appropriately for another. And in fact, the system through the years has various charges. For instance, the general fund always pre-pays for all the payroll. And then after the general fund pays for the payroll, if I'm correct, by the treasurer, then it gets allocated to water, it gets allocated to Act 51 monies and things. But the general fund has always traditionally, and it's, the system works very well, and the charges, and the auditors have told me that it works real well, so we have not made alterations to what was originally set up and modified through the years. But that's how these costs get allocated. Vendors would not want to, and it would cost more for multiple billing, so one entity itself usually buys it, and then it gets prorated. But that's how the system works.
Okay, so in other words, we can actually see, if we wanted, of who's getting charged from one account to another?
Absolutely, every penny.
Okay, as long as I get to see it, I...
Absolutely, rather welcome.
Councilman Abdullah?
This is for Chief Gavin. I had a question on item number 6-23, and this is in regards to the state dispatcher training funds. The only question I had, just a little bit of a clarification, I guess there was some funds that were given to the city, and there was $4,569.90 left, and I guess it has to be returned. The only question I had is, since we were given those funds, why we didn't use them? And why was there so much more?
Chief Gavin?
We get training funds from the state every year, and you're allowed X amount of years, I think it's three years, to use the funds up. Sergeant Lursay was in charge of it, was using some of the other funds, and he neglected to use those, so we have to return it back to the state. So it was an error. We didn't know we had a three-year time limit. We thought we had a five-year time limit, so we had to return the money back to the state, so we did not use it.
Sergeant Lursay did tell me that this was going to be paid back, and then we reapply.
We reapply. We get money every year from the state on training. That's why when we do our budget, we've got to keep X amount in there, so that the state gives us X amount.
Do you know how much was used offhand?
You get about $20,000 a year, $20,000, $25,000. I'd have to look into it.
No, just, that's fine.
So we have a city training, and then we have funds that we get from the state. Some classes you use city training, there's other seminars, classes, training, you have to use the state funds. So, you have to balance between both of them. And he thought there was a five-year limit on the funds, and there was a three-year, three-year limit, I believe. We had to return the funds to him.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is consideration of bids, tabulation of bids for the CDBG 2015 Berwin Center improvements, Berwin Center HVAC project.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kozinski?
I move, council concur with Ron Eamon, Director of the Community Economic Development Department, to authorize Johnson Controls to perform the HVAC work activity that was defined and designated at a cost of $8,245, and the mayor and the city clerk to sign on behalf of the city, also to return the bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Horvath?
My favorite company, Mr. Mayor. How are we doing with Johnson Controls? I mean, Vince, I guess the question is for you. I don't know.
Well, Bill, Mr. Zimmer could probably respond.
Bill, you know, are they, you know, we're good with them? I mean, are, are they...
They've improved greatly, so...
Have they?
Right. Actually, we've got a lot of upcoming projects for capital outlay items, and as you can see on this, they were a little bid. We've got a decent service person in-house.
Keep your word for that one.
Councilman Musket? Does this come with any warranty for how long, or the unit itself, or labor, and...
There's a warranty on it for the unit that's going to be installed.
There is a warranty for the unit that's to be installed. We haven't gotten it yet. They haven't purchased it yet.
So we don't know how the length of the warranty for parts or labor or anything like...
Not now, I don't yet.
That would be nice to know, what we're getting for that. I mean, it's a real low bid, but I'm just worried that it's going to be substandard.
No, it's the, it's going to replace the unit that was operating up there for the last 23 years, so I assume it's at least equal quality, if not better.
Director Eamon, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is item 9A from Assessor Foucault, annual printing and mailing of assessment change notices.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Horvath?
I move that the council approve the contract with Centron Data Services to print and mail the 2016 assessment change notices, cost ranging between .391 and 439. The total number of notices will be mailed approximately $24,363 in the amount of $10,598 as outlined in 9A.
Seconded by Councilman Musket. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is from Police Chief Gavin, payment for Justice Center boiler repairs.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton?
I move to approve Police Chief Lee Gavin's request for payment to System Corporation for, this is a payment for temperature controller, flow switch, and two igniters for the boiler at the Justice Center. Payment for the invoice is the amount of $2,302. The court will pay $805.70, and the invoice for $1496.3 will be paid out of the police department's contractual services account as outlined in 9B.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is from Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer, equipment disposal. Councilman Kozinski?
Move, council concur with DPW Director Bill Zimmer, and authorize the disposal of items indicated and listed in item 9C, the document dated February 1st, 2016.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Musket. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, no, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is from Corporation Counsel Gary Miyaki, city policy regarding alcoholic liquor retail licenses and retail sales.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Horvath?
I move that the council approve ordinance H-15-08.
H-15 dash 0?
Yeah, H-15 dash 5 as outlined in 9D.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the updated version that was transmitted through the email.
Right, it would actually be the February 8, 2016, updated policy.
Right.
That that would be approved.
The motion maker and the second approver that, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the... Councilman, Corporation Counsel Miyaki?
Yes, there was a second issue, too, with regard to the fees. It would be my recommendation at this time that maybe, having talked to a few of the department heads, that we bring that issue back for the next meeting, even though it may cause things to go a little slower, unless the body would want to end up addressing that issue now. If you recall, the city clerk and I recommended a fee with regard to the new license application of $450. The annual review fee, if you recall, indicated that there would be a couple of options, maybe one, because it's a new process, and it's really unclear to us how much work this is going to end up taking, that something nominal be set, or there not be a fee at this point until we've had the experience to know how much time it's going to take. Most of this would be just to verify, for example, that there's been no tickets issued to the premises, that the taxes have all been paid, and fees have all been paid. Can't imagine on computers that it would take a lot of time, but maybe it would. So, as you recall, I mentioned the idea that it would be possible to end up, like we did with the false alarms ordinance, not doing a fee initially, just from the standpoint of having a better notion of what's going on with the amount that it's going to cost, as well as to allow the business owners to have an opportunity to adjust to this new regulation.
So do you want another motion, or do you want to do that in a study session?
At least, my recommendation would be that we don't have to have a study session, that we could circulate this to the department heads, if you feel a fee is necessary. I think the new license application fee of $450, given the amount of things that have to be looked at by Mr. Soba and his department, Mr. McIntyre, the fire department, the police department, as well as the treasurer's office and comptroller's office, which really, they just have to verify that there's nothing that's due to the city. $450 doesn't necessarily seem unreasonable, and could be probably approved at this time. The annual review may be something which this body would either want to set at a nominal amount, or not do it this year, or have us come back with some recommendation at the next meeting.
Corporation Counsel, what I think I would prefer is for you and the clerk to make recommendations regarding fees, and then we'll look at those recommendations. I don't know what everybody else's feeling is.
Well, it's not, you're saying those fees, but I'm with the understanding that it's one fee, 450, or that's, the suggestion is $450.
Or the new application. We have two different types. We have the new application fee, and we have the annual renewal fee. The annual renewal is a far less involved process. The new application is going to be more involved.
So would the, would the renewal be 452?
No, it would be far lower than that.
A nominal fee, so...
It could be nominal, or you could say, look, the fee this year is not going to end up, for 2016 is going to be waived until we find out what it's going to actually take.
So do you want to come back with a recommendation to us on the nominal fee?
With regard to that, maybe that would be helpful. I suggest that is a possible option. With regard to the new application, I really think we don't know exactly what it's going to be, and $450 seems, I think, like a reasonable amount, and my sense is the city clerk concurs in that.
Councilman Musket?
Yeah, I was going to say, do we need to make a motion on that, then, right now?
Yes.
To put in place the $450, since the both of you have already discussed it and went through everything?
I think that would be a good thing to do.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that I'd like to make a motion that we approve the $450 annual fee for the new application only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Second.
We've got to vote on the, Councilman Kozinski, go ahead.
You already have a motion on the table.
Yes.
Friendly amendment to that motion, or continue the motion to include the $450 expense.
Right.
We'll handle it in one resolution, and then we'll come back with regard to the renewal fees as we gain experience as to what we need to do.
I'll take back my motion, and then...
Well, no, you can just have a friendly amendment to the motion, right?
Yes.
Then I...
And add the $450.
Or you can amend the original motion.
Yes.
Make it in the original motion.
Do you want to do the amendment?
No, you just did it.
But I, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make...
Did you get all that?
They'll amend the original motion. Make a motion to amend the original motion, and add the $450 for the renewal of the license.
No, 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 no.
Or excuse me, for our new license, for our new license fee.
Yeah.
Second.
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, I'm confused as to what is, it's $450 for the new application.
Yes.
Yes.
For the renewal, it would be...
We haven't said it yet.
We haven't said that.
Just setting the, okay, all those in favor of the amendment? The amended?
The amended.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is from Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, vector control program. Now, this is a letter from Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton?
I move City Council Director Administration and Corporate Attorney Miyaki to prepare a request for proposal for vector control to be presented to the City Council, and we're hoping for a timely manner of March 15th, if possible, 2016.
I second that motion.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor?
I would like to, when I saw that this was on the agenda, I actually attempted to notify Councilwoman, and did not receive a response back, but I think it's important tonight that we'd like to know what it is that is being proposed, and then if we can have our ordinance, Jack, maybe tell the council what we're doing, and certainly, any suggestions and ideas that will help the program, I'm more than willing to just institute, but I am not sure from this as to what it is that we're missing and what we need to do. So, I would respectfully ask that if that dialogue can take place, maybe we all can learn something.
Ordnance Director McIntyre, can you discuss this briefly before the meeting?
Yeah, we'd like to first know what is being proposed, though.
Can I?
Mr. Chairman?
Well, Jack, go ahead. I think Jack's going to maybe hopefully answer some of our questions.
Good evening.
Evening, Jack.
I just, I want to start by saying, I read the letter, and with all due respect, we are, we do have vector control. We do it every single day. If you look at the Wikipedia definition of vector control, it's abatement by any means necessary, or any means possible. So, I'd like to explain to you what we do currently with our vector control. When we get a call, we go out to the property, we look around the property, and we begin the dialogue with the person that's calling regarding the rats on their property. We ask them to... No problem. We ask them to, if they have an animal, we ask them to make sure they're picking up after the animal every single time it goes out to use the bathroom outside. If they're not storing garbage properly, we ask them to do that. We look to see if they have anything stored on the property, anything on the grass, any wood piles, any lumber, any building material. We look to see if there's a shed on the property that doesn't have a rat wall underneath it. We look at all those things, and then we ask them to correct those things. We also have a letter that we take to all the adjoining properties around that property, and it's a letter explaining the exact things that we just explained with the person that called in the report. We then schedule it for a seven-day follow-up. We also, if we find out that it's a property that is not owner occupied but is being rented, we also issue a letter, and we mail that off to the owner explaining that we'd been at the property. I want to, I want to talk just briefly about when we started issuing, when we started putting, or making bait boxes available. We had a call, and this is actually before my time, but I know the history of it. We had a call from the Southwest Neighbor Association asking for assistance that they had an increase in rat activity in their area. So at the time, I was working with Bill Zimmer, and a letter was generated, and it went out to all the folks in that area, and we said to them, we want to attack this aggressively. And so we went to those properties when they requested that. We went to those properties, and we, we did exactly what I, what I just explained. We looked at all the possible reasons why there would be rats on that property or around that property. If we corrected all those things, and all those things around there were corrected, and there was still an issue with live rats in the area, then we made those bait boxes available. They could come to the DPW department, they could pick them up, they were already preloaded with the rat poison, they would place it at their property. But then we monitored it. We would go out every 10 days or every 15 days, and we would check the boxes and make sure that whether or not they needed more poison, or if they didn't need any more poison. In the middle of that program, a resident from the South End made a call to the state of Michigan, and reported that we were doing this, but not by virtue of having certification. So, the inspector from the state of Michigan came down and met with myself and the mayor, and the mayor's assistant, and the DPW director. We had a long discussion over a couple of days about the program. She agreed that she saw a benefit to the program, but she suggested that we put the program on hold until we got, if we wanted to continue making these available, that we had to make them available. But our ordinance officers that were doing the vector control had to be certified in issuing the poison, so we're in the process of taking those tests. It's a difficult test, and I will say that our officers are also frustrated, because one of them just recently took the test again, and he missed it by one point. So, hopefully he'll be able to do that in two weeks and retake the test. I want to just talk a little bit about trends. One of the concerns I have with this, and I think we're going to probably talk about it, is I also don't know what the goal would be at looking at an outside source. In 2015, and these are things that we've recorded in our system when calls come in to us, not for a second am I up here saying that we don't have certain areas of the city that are experiencing rat issues, no doubt about it. Even where I live, in the northeast end, we've seen it, too, where we're at, all right? But as far as rat calls that come in, rat enforcement calls that come into my department, in 2015, I'm sorry, in 2014, we had 241 calls come in. In 2015, we had 207 calls come in. And then, from August to today's current date, we've had about 85 calls that have come in. So I did the math, we have 25,000 properties, it's about point, less than 1%, about .8% of all the properties, we've gotten calls that they've experienced rat issues or rodent issues on their property. So, that's how we're addressing that. I also have spent a lot of time researching this over the last couple of weeks, and if I can just hand this out to council real quick, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but, go ahead. I contacted four, well, I also contacted the World Health Organization in Washington, DC. I wanted their opinion. But I contacted some companies in the area that, that we have had experience with before, and I asked, reached out to get their opinion on, what do you, what would it be like to have a contract with a municipal? Every one of them raised their hands, you know, and said, let us sign up, we want that. Orkin is one of the companies that I spoke with, the Michigan Humane Society, Earthkind, which is a company that does a little more earth-friendly approach to mechanical or chemical intervention when it comes to rat control, and then another company called Urich. They all said the same thing. If you got a fat rat because he's eating dog feces in a backyard, or he's eating garbage, it doesn't matter how many bait boxes you put out there, how much poison you put out there, they're not going to go through the effort if it's easily accessible. They all said the same things, that the chemical intervention is the last resort. The initial thing is to get on the property, look at whether or not there's blight on the property, look at whether or not there's animal feces that possibly could get removed. There's one in particular that I think is important to talk about, and it, and it has to do with someone who has created a Facebook page in the city, and I actually appreciate the Facebook page. But this particular area, very clean. If you go to the houses from the front, all pristine, all beautiful properties, things are in order, there's not a lot of clutter, there's not a lot of things stored outside. But we just discovered last week, I think it was Tuesday of last week, that a neighbor in this area has a pig, and they keep it in their backyard. Well, I don't know if any of you've got the experience that I did when I was younger, but I got to work on my uncle and aunt's farm about four summers in a year. It's real, it's real tricky to get pig feces up off the ground. It's grainy, it's granular, and it tends to be more liquid.
What's going on here, this demonstration? I'd just ignore it.
Yeah, go ahead, Jack. Yeah, if we're going to have an orderly meeting, a substantive meeting, it's got to be one person at a time. So go ahead, Director McIntyre.
So, we found out that there was a pig there, there was a lot of pig feces in the backyard, and that's definitely a food source for rats in that area. So, we asked them to get rid of the pig. We, as a courtesy, we're not issuing a violation. If they follow, follow the timeline that we've given them, it'll just be a warning, and they won't receive a ticket. But I think that will definitely clear up that particular area. I mentioned, at one of the previous meetings, what I've done is, the calls come in, we take the calls, and then we schedule them in an orderly, and as far as I'm concerned, a very efficient way. I've taken each area of the city, assigned it to a particular officer, and then within his area, he has zones. And so, he may be in the same area every Monday, the same area every Tuesday, the same area every Wednesday, the same area every Thursday, unless it's our officer that works Tuesday through Friday, then... through Friday, then obviously, his schedule will change. I'm part, I'm putting together, based on calls that are coming in, I'm, am putting together graphs that show particular areas that have higher phone calls coming into our office regarding this activity than others. There's a lot of areas in the southeast side that have, we've never gotten calls from. And I have family that live in the southeast side of the city, and they've never seen a rat, and they've never seen a mouse. So again, I'm not discounting, I'm not discounting that there are particular areas that, that we have to, that we have to address. But I think there's a common sense way of approaching it, and I think we're doing that. I wanted to also mention that I've surveyed other cities locally, about 15 of them. There are cities that do pass out poison out of their DPW departments. I'm not particularly comfortable with that. I think if we return to using the bait stations, it's something that we can regulate, it's something that we can monitor, we have it built into our system, we know where the boxes are at, we know when we need to check them, and I'm much more comfortable, you know, doing it, continuing to do it that way. So that's, that's what I have as far as that goes. You can kind of go through the, this handout that I gave you from these different companies, and it kind of explains the same thing. The, the, the initial thing that they're all saying is that you have to get rid of the blight, and you have to get rid of the food source. Once you do those things, then...
Jack, when you say the comfortable with the way we're doing it, and the bait boxes that I think are built into the system, can you explain that a little more?
The what?
The, you said, the way you're doing it now, you can track those and build...
Yeah, when it... Once we've gone, once we've gone to a property, and we've, we've clearly cleaned things up, we've gotten rid of the blight, we've gotten rid of the apples on the ground from apples trees, we've gotten rid of the dog feces, and they're still having live rats on the property, then in the previous, before we put the program on hold, they would come to the DPW department, they would sign a release form, they would take the box themselves, and they would put it on the property, and then we would control that. We would have a key that would get into that box, and we would check it every 10 to 15 days. They wouldn't have a key to get into it. If it needed more poison, we would put it in there. If it, if there was no activity, then we'd remove, we would remove the box from the property.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, three years ago, the city of Dearborn Heights began the development, and like you had mentioned, Director McIntyre, with the urging of a neighborhood association, Southwest Dearborn Heights Neighborhood Association, to bring forward a vector control program, the need for addressing and managing, because we know with our two watersheds, they're indigenous to the area naturally, so we're talking about managing the rat population in our community. So I've done my research as well, and, and we've talked many times, and I know you can acknowledge that. We talked about the multi-pronged enforcement, you know, you have your ordinance enforcement, which you're, you've acknowledged you're doing, and we recognize that, the cleanup, residential and business, the educational component of outreach, you've done that as well. But the other component that is missing and necessary is the use of the bait boxes, and you've already acknowledged yourself by saying, you know, we were running that, and, and I have the report here where we were cited, because we're not certified. And I know, and you've acknowledged that, you know, we're trying to go through testing, but the question remains, you know, at what point, because the way I see it, and this is what I'm hearing, and this is why residents are here, because it's a concern in our neighborhoods. And I know you've shared numbers with us, which I appreciate, but I've also seen, you know, the emails we're getting, the calls we're getting, over 100 posts in a week alone, people talking about rats and their problems, and they're daily living with rats. They see them daily running down driveways, they see them in the street, there's dead rats in the yard, there's the, they're going out to start their vehicles, and the wires are chewed. So yes, it is a problem, that's my measurement. My tool of measuring is hearing from our residents who we represent, who were elected to represent, and this is a concern, for health and safety and public wellness. So my thing that I'm bringing, and this is to answer your question, Mayor, is, well, what exactly do you want? Something interim for outsourcing that component until we are in a position where we can run it ourselves. However, I want to be fair and say, because I've always been an advocate for the ordinance department, I do have some concerns where you're taxed, where you're running ordinance issues and blight and different enforcement, as well as animal control. And now we're asking your, your officers to take on another piece of vector control and getting certified, and that test is hard. These are people who, the people who have gone through it and passed, and I've talked to them. That is not an easy test, because they are a specialized service. So that's something that really, again, behalf of the residents, that's why we're here, would like to see us have the discussion. And all we're asking for is a bid, the bid process, to go out and see what's out there. I know other municipalities have done this, including the city of Dearborn has done that. About six or seven years ago, they did that, and now they have their own program effectively running. Yes, I would rather see it in-house, absolutely, without a doubt. But right now, we're missing that one component. That's all we're asking, to do what's in the best interest for our residents, for our city. Again, dead rats in the yard, pets getting sick, I mean, this is a concern. And to say it's not, you know, your numbers, I appreciate your numbers, but I am responding, we're all responding, to the measurement of what we're seeing and hearing from our residents, and I think it's a very real problem. So that is simply, that's the answer, by the way, to your question, is we're looking for, that's what the letter says, that's what my motion said, I request for a proposal for vector control, for the pesticide, the rat bait boxes.
For privatized.
Interim, interim.
Interim thing.
Yes, interim. It's not a permanent thing, because I'd rather see your department operational with that, but I know you're also having a lot on your plate. You have, like I said, animal control, you have enforcement, and I know your department and your officers are working hard, I tell you that all the time. But right now, we're missing this one piece, and by having residents here, that, to me, speaks volumes, and we're elected to represent those issues.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, the mayor?
If an individual has a rat problem on his premises, I always thought we were enforcing them to eradicate that. But now, so are all of us, many of us who keep our properties up, being asked to subsidize the person who has the rats, versus, is that, what is actually being proposed? Would we get an independent contractor, and then it would be that individual that's gonna pay for it, or are we being asked that all the city's gonna pay for it?
I, I think this is a big issue, and I think it's, we're not gonna solve it here tonight, and I think maybe we need to have a study session on the issue.
Am I incorrect, this class that, or the tests they're taking is a week from today?
Jack?
A week from today, yeah.
Director McIntyre, go ahead.
Yeah, a week from today.
Point of order. Go ahead, Jack, and then I'll, I'll get to you.
If I, if I can just make a very serious plea, and I, and I've asked this before, if you are, if you are getting phone calls, or if you're getting Facebook messages, or if you're getting emails, and it has to do with rodents, blight, or anything on a property, I need to hear it first, so that I, because I have, I have a system of how I'm tracking these things, and how I'm putting together projections of where I need people, and how many people I need to allocate in certain areas. I, I don't, again, I don't doubt that people are seeing rats, there's no doubt about that. But I can't put it into my measurement tool, which I think is a more practical one, when I have actual numbers and I have areas that we need to target. My concern is, where would they go? Where would we send this company to? Would we just send them to the, the whole southeast side? I mean, we'd have to be able to give them areas that they would go after, and I'm putting those things together. So what I'm asking is, if you're, I'm really pleading about this, if you're getting calls, or if you're getting emails, please refer them back to us so that we can track this properly. I think one of the things that's happened, with all due respect, is that people aren't calling me or my department, and they're calling other people, and I can't, I don't get that information. I don't get that information.
Mr. Chair?
And even if, even if you call my department and you get the voicemail, we do clear the messages out every day, and we do schedule people to follow up on them.
Chair? Councilman Muske, one, one at a time? Go ahead.
All this is, is a request to go out for a bid. It doesn't cost us anything to go out for a bid. Now, I don't understand what the holdup is. We, we send out requests for bids all the time. So why can't we just say, "Let's request a bid"? We're not saying we're going to implement it. We want to know what it's gonna cost, that's all. Now, you and I have had this discussion about rats before I was, before I was sworn in as a councilman. We had people that tested, didn't pass the test, missed by one point. When was the last time this person took the test and they lost by, and they missed by one point? When was that test taken? Now, I'm just asking a question here.
To get into detail, we will...
Because, you know, because this is what we hear all the time. The residents call us, they complain, they say they're not doing nothing about it. Then we go find out from Jack that he doesn't get the call. So I understand Jack's frustration, that he's saying he's not getting called, but then the information I get is that we're testing, he missed by one point, we're gonna test again. That was back in November, now we're February.
Jack, what's your, what's your phone number for people to call? What's the phone number?
Again, this is for, for a bid, this is not, we're not passing anything tonight. You know, this bid comes in with so much money, how can we fiscally be responsible by spending all of that money? I sure wouldn't vote for it.
Mr. Councilman Abdullah?
I just wanted to ask, I mean, why not a combination of two things? Why not a combination of those bait boxes, and this particular vector program, and the residents taking care of their properties? Kind of a combination of two or three things to get rid of this problem. I mean, there's obviously a problem here. I'm new to the council, and I've gotten a lot of calls myself, and I know you're mentioning that everybody's calling that particular number, but the reality is, if you had 100 people, not 100 people are gonna call, if all 100 are having that particular problem. There's definitely a problem in this city, and definitely needs to be taken care of. The other thing, I know, at one of the last meetings, that there was a mention that you are short on officers at this particular point, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, it's four of them, if that's correct?
Right now, I have three full-time and two part-time.
Okay, so three full-time and two part-time, and then you guys are bringing in these bait boxes, and then you gotta have to have these people go take care of those bait boxes, and you've got the same officers taking care of animal control and the other ordinances. I mean, to me, just logically, from just a business standpoint, it's practically impossible to finish, not to mention doing this four days a week on top of that. So to me, it seems like almost, you know...
Well, we operate, we operate five days a week.
Okay, but, but also in addition to that, it's not working. Whatever it is that we're doing right now is not working, and at this point, it's just an estimate. We're just gonna get two or three estimates and figure out if this is something that we should pursue or not pursue. And, and I see where the mayor's come from, as far as, you know, who's gonna pay for this, I get that. But we still need to at least find out a number so that us as a body can make a decision if this is something in, in a direction that we're gonna, you know, we're gonna go with. Also, I think I'd like to add just one more, one last thing. Maybe, you know, some people maybe don't want to call, so if you don't mind, maybe if there's an email address, or maybe possibly on the website, an additional format for our residents to be able to get ahold of you, and I, and I know you're doing your best, by the way, I, I know you're doing the best you can, but with the number of officers that you've got, to me, it's practically impossible to get rid of. And there's a lot of presumption that every neighbor's gonna clean up their property. The, I'm in real estate sales, I know how this works. The reality is, there's a lot of houses where they're not that well taken care of, and I'm not sure if what we're doing now is gonna get it cleaned up. And in terms of what the mayor was talking about, I get that, you know, I mean, a lot of us obviously keep up our houses. But the reality is, if there is a person in the neighborhood that is not keeping up their property, and those rats are gonna come to my house, I've got a problem with that, so...
Yeah, but I'm saying that the person that's got the problem ought to pay for the extermination.
Well, and that's, and, and that would have to be determined, once we figure out at least what the dollar figure is.
But one, one of the things, on, to go out for bids, you have to define what it is you want the company to do. I'm not, I'm not trying to be antagonistic towards it, I'm just saying...
I can't hear.
That you have to, you have to be able to define, are, are we asking that an area, a block be done, or a house? And so it's gotta be defined if you're gonna get bids. And that's why we needed to better understand what was in the proposal, because it was so general, that nobody be able to bid on it.
Uh, Councilman Kozinski?
The, as this dialogue unfolds, I am thinking through...
One meeting, folks.
I'm thinking through the possibility of following the same protocol for vector control as we do for grass and noxious weeds.
I agree.
If, if a particular resident is not cutting his grass and has a foot-tall weed plot, we send our workers in, and there, there is budget allowed for that kind of expense and allocated, and it's a recyclable fund that keeps going. When the, when the RFP was mentioned in the letter, and also verbally now, I didn't know for sure whether the RFP is for a gross operation citywide or subdivision-wide, or is it an RFP for an expense for an individual homeowner who is a chronic violator of this vector control problem? If you're looking for an RFP, and incidentally, we don't, we don't have budget for this, we haven't budgeted for being on rat patrol. If you, if you want an RFP for an individual to pay for it, and if he doesn't pay, it goes on the tax, that's a laudable approach to the, to the, to the problem. But to go out for an RFP for the entire community, I don't think we're in, we're in the ballgame for that. So in a nutshell, I would pattern a strategy, much like we have a protocol for weeds and grass in the summertime. It happens to shift in the wintertime to a vector and control. With that kind of a problem, you won't have to worry about somebody being certified or licensed right up to date. The, the officer will go down to a location, issue a citation, if it's not cleaned up in 24 hours, the, if the RFP comes back for a specific individual residence to clean it up in 24 hours, he's, he's got his pocketbook ready to pay for that, not the city. I personally don't want to pay for somebody else's rat problem. And I can, I probably have enough calls with that conclusion on my telephone telling me, "Don't you vote for a program that's gonna bill the entire city for an individual who has a rat problem? I won't pay for it." So that's where I stand.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, uh...
Oh, go ahead.
Corporation Council, Jeremy Atkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are a couple of concerns that I have with regard to this. One of them is, there is a lack of definition to actually, for me to actually come up with an RFP, unless I actually came up with all the specifications. And that's part of the difficulty in this situation, because someone is going to want to know how they get paid if they are in this business. Are they gonna be paid by the city, and how are we going to make sure that we secure payment? Is it going to be something that city provided? All of these things could end up making a difference in terms of how much the bid would come in. If I was a contractor and knew that I was gonna be paid by the city no matter what happened, I would potentially look at this much more differently than if I was gonna have to go out to an individual residence place and then end up recovering like we have for the grass-cutting program, as the mayor and the Councilman Kozinski had noted. The other issue is that, I don't know that anyone has really thought about this, but this is bargaining unit work, is becoming bargaining unit work, and I don't know if there's been any sort of discussions about that particular issue with respect to privatizing bargaining unit work. That would potentially lead us to have an unfair labor practice, I say potentially, if it's not approached correctly. So those are the concerns. Obviously, if the council votes for me to end up going forward with preparing a request for proposals, I'll do so, but right now, with the information I have, I'm really not sure how I would draft it, given, given the lack of specificity.
Ordnance Director Jack McIntyre?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking for, too. I'm asking for, if this is the way we end up going, and, and, and we decide that this is the way we want to do it, then, you know, I'm not gonna disagree with that, but I want to go at it more responsibly. And I appreciate, again, if you've gotten hundreds of phone calls, I need those hundreds of phone calls information so that we can realistically look at where these are. When we went into the southwest area, the president of that association was able to tell us specifically where the complaints were coming from. We, we kind of put together a map of certain areas, and we worked on that with her, and I, I kind of got involved with her in doing that. So we knew that there were certain sections that had more influence than others, and so we went to those areas, and we, and we addressed those in those areas.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? Councilman Abdullah?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Vera, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, I don't think anybody really objects to resolving the issue. I think the issue really is, with all the effort, Jack, that you've put forth here, and with the results being not as satisfying... and with the results being not as satisfactory as we'd like them to see, and the fact that we want to go out for bid, but we don't know how to bid this out, why don't we invite ORCAN? Why don't we invite EarthKind and Alridge Pest Controls to come in here and help us approach this collectively? And if it means that we need to go out for bid, at least we have an idea on how we're going to approach this on the bid process, rather than just assume that one method is gonna take care of it, because there's no doubt, you need to take care of the source of the problem. And in taking, addressing the source of the problem, how can that pest control company help us in the interim?
You know, the inspector that came down and met with us last year when we decided to put that program on hold, I reached out to her about two weeks ago and asked her if she could actually come to a meeting. She wasn't available for this week, but she was pretty certain she'd be able to come to the last meeting of this month, and I think that's, I think that makes sense. I don't know that we just wanna invite ORCAN because I'm sure they're gonna slay it their way. We wanna also have professionals from the Department of Agriculture, and she's willing to come and talk about trends and things that create rats and, and different modes of correcting that, so...
Because we're coming up on a springtime here. We're coming up when they're gonna start breeding, and it's gonna be another rat race.
Councilman Abdullah, are you finished on that?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just had a question. How long, in your opinion, has this problem been going on for?
Ever. Ever.
Rats in the city?
Guys, if you don't mind, let's just get his opinion.
Rats in the city, all my life.
Well, I mean, there's always gonna be some rats, obviously. I'm talking about where it's become a major problem, or, or a bigger problem, I should say.
I think there's different contributing factors that make it more obvious at different times. I, you know, recently, there was some construction work done down on Party that may have stirred some things up. Anytime the creek gets backed up, that's gonna kinda stimulate some things. I think a lot of transient folks moving in and out, that, that contributes, contributes to it as well, so...
I mean...
I mean, if you look at the numbers that I have, and they're just numbers based on calls that are coming in to me, the trend was that it was moving downward, and I think particularly in the southwest area.
Well, the reason, the reason I'm asking is, if this has been going on for years and years and years and years and years, and what we're doing, and I, and I, you know, I'm not even sure if this is the perfect answer. We don't know yet, but all we're doing right now is just getting an estimate. That's all we're doing, is just getting an estimate. So to me, I honestly, I don't know why we're getting that much resistance on getting an estimate, and we could clear up the other details later as far as who's paying for it, who's not paying for it, et cetera, et cetera, but whatever we're doing is not working. It's not been working for whatever number of years, whether it's two, three, five, or 10, and until they pass their test, again, we're back to square one, where you may not have enough, you know, person power to be able to take care of this issue. And if, based on what I've read on rats, I'm not a rat expert, obviously, but from what I understand, two of them can make, I don't know, hundreds or thousands, or whatever the heck it is, this is a very urgent problem to at least get an estimate. I mean, that's all it is. It's just an estimate, and even clarifying what the proposal was, I mean, that could be done right now if we had to, or maybe by the next meeting, or maybe by next Tuesday's meeting, but I think we ought to pursue something that's gonna get this thing done. It hasn't worked for years. I've heard of it in my business for years, that there was an issue there, and I've heard of it from people we've sold houses to, where they come back to me and say, hey, there's a problem here. So I really think we ought to put much more focus on this to get this thing done for the residents and get this thing done for the city before it spreads to also other parts of the city, and then we're gonna have an even bigger problem on our hands. Whatever we're doing is not working.
Well, you know, some of it has to do with numbers. Four years ago, there were two ordinance officers under the Building Department. We now have increased our, the numbers of staff, we're able to look at things more efficiently in terms of how we go after blight and, and things like these on properties, but I don't think there's, I mean, there's no driving for, there is, there's gotta be a reason for the increase, and the reason, I don't think necessarily, is that we don't have enough bait boxes. The reason has to do more with what's attracting the rats to the property. We have to get rid of the source.
No, I agree that that's gotta be done, no doubt about it. I mean, just getting ORCAN out there is not enough, even if they did spray, obviously. So that's why I said earlier, I mean, it's a combination of all of us working on this, including the residents that live in these homes that are blighted.
And if I could say one more thing, growing up, you know, I, the area that I grew up in was right on Heinz Park and right on Roos Park. I, I lived right across from Detroit where I live. We, there were always rats, rodents, deer, foxes, because we were by those water sources, we were by those parks and things like that. My, I, my parents just took care of it. I mean, they, and, and under the ordinance, people are responsible for what happens on their own property. We have an ordinance, I mean, we could go out today and, and find rats on property and start issuing tickets for people for not, for harboring rats on their property. To me, that's not the approach to go at it, because in many cases, it's not the people that are keeping the pristine property, it's the isolated property that is full of blight, full of dog feces. Many people in the city have way over the amount limit of how many animals they can have on their property. What I'm saying today is, let's put some real numbers together, let's put, put some graphs together and, and look at where we're really need to target before we think about the possibility of going out for bid, because I, I just don't see why we'd go out for bid without having the information to provide.
Knowing exactly what we want. It's a complex issue. Councilman Musket?
You know, we also need to have our ordinance officers be more visual when they're driving by. We had an incident where an ordinance officer had gone through and checked an area the day before I came to you, and there's a huge dumpster there that neighbors have been complaining about for years that was totally missed. I, I can't understand how someone could miss such a blatant violation that's been going on for years. I guess this place has been cited before. How do you miss something like that? And the rats, you know, when I drive through the parking lot and I see a rat the size of a cat crossing my car, I was just totally shocked, and then you've got a, a, a well-established business that has clientele coming from other cities that are telling them, we're not gonna come back to you no more. We can't have that, and, and I agree with Mr. Kozinski in, in, in a sense, that when we find problems like that, and they're the cause, they need to pay, and they need to pay heavily. Not just, we're gonna give you 10, 10 days, and we're gonna give you a $50 check, or $50 ticket. To hell with that, it's thousands of dollars, because you're affecting the entire city now, okay? These people know what they're doing, they know they're not supposed to be doing it, and all they do is spit in our face when they just blatantly do it. Everybody knows, they gotta take care of their property. Businesses know, they gotta get their dumpsters dumped and clean up their property. They know that. It's time to hit them in the pocketbook where it hurts. I've sat there, where you're standing right there, for years, saying, let's hit them in the pocketbook where it counts, because nobody's gonna stop doing it unless they gotta pay for it.
We'll, we'll look at ordinance as I do that. Uh, Jack? Jack, any, any rebuttal, any further?
I can't tell you, we are hitting them in the pocketbook. We're writing so many tickets now for property violations that we've had to create our own docket in the court. Gary, Gary can attest to that. We are hitting them. Last year, we, we, we did about 8,000 enforcements with four people. This year, with five people and the additional person that we got in the Tifa area, in 2015, we did 11,222 enforcements. We went out on 11,222 inspection enforcement, so...
Good job, but how much money did we collect on that?
Well, if you'd like, I'll have that for at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to know how much money we actually collected.
And, and... Somewhere in the area of about 90,000, I think.
Well, how much is it per, how much is it per ticket? Like, the first, if, if, if I did this at my house...
200.
What would my first ticket be, what would my second ticket be?
It's double.
So 200, and then 400 on the second one?
And triple.
And how long do they have, and then triple? And how long do they have to...
Normally, when we get to that point, we get a court order to go onto the property and correct it, and then charge the homeowner, and we, we have many of those that we're doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Uh, Councilman Kozinski?
If this service goes on to the general revenue stream of the taxpayer, there is no incentive for that person to get on the stick and do his own work. It encourages more people to misbehave in that manner. When you begin to hit them in the pocketbook, according to Councilman Musket's language, it's gonna work. The, Mr. McIntyre just described 200, 400, 600. If that control officer has to come back three times in 30 days, he better have a fee ready to pay that control officer for his services, about $600. In addition to that, the exterminator's gotta be paid, so I'm not in favor of putting this on the general revenue stream of the taxpayer. I'm in favor of putting it on the individual who is not behaving in a manner that conventional wisdom tells him not to behave.
Just like we do with the grass ordinance.
Grass program, yeah.
Mayor, do you have anything else?
We'll be coming back, because one of the big things that we were told is, when we go out later this year for the garbage contract, we'll be bidding it out, is we'll be going to the containers, and we think that that, we, from other communities, other mayors, I've heard, that that has helped in the vector control, because those, the rats can't get to the containers. We unfortunately have a lot of people that use those bags, and those are more accessible to roads.
I still do.
Yeah, so we'll be coming back to you, but in the bid process, we're gonna go to the larger containers, and they'll be, they'll have the lid on them.
So what are we gonna do about this here?
So, so there's been a motion and supported. Is there amendment, or any interest in moving this to a study session, so we have a study session?
You have a motion on the table, don't you?
We need to vote on the motion.
It's a, it's a, it's a complex issue. Any...
Council Chairman?
And please sit down.
No. Start listening to the residents.
But we have to follow the agenda, Resident Todd.
We all follow the agenda.
We, we do. All, all we're gonna, we'll be here till 1:00 in the morning, believe me. The, the city council can't, the administration goes out for bids, so the city council can pass, I guess, a resolution that the mayor go out for bid, but I, this issue really needs to go to a study session, to sit down and discuss it, see what the options are, what the costs are. That's, that's my thought.
That's the purpose of bidding, though, is to get some of that information and have the conversation. We don't even have...
The legislative body of this city, the city council can't go out for bids.
Why don't we have a study session with the, with, with the ORCAN, with... Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting. Companies to come in and make their recommendations, and maybe we can come up with a, maybe we can come up with a...
It'd be an open meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Is there, is there, is there an amendment to the motion to do that?
amend the motion to go to a study session?
Well, but is the maker and the second?
Maker.
Fine, we refer to study session, so discussion.
What, Mr. Chairman?
Timing.
The body could, as, as a motion, refer the body, or refer the main motion to a study session, and that would end up, basically, you could, someone can make that motion right now, it's in order.
And here's another issue, there is, because we, we have certain members of our, workers in our city who are subject to a union contract, so we private tie something, there is a union, there is a labor issue, and so...
We can discuss that, can't we?
Yeah, so, so the, the motion is amended, is to take Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton's letter and, and this issue and move it to a study session. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair.
All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Chair, I have a question before we vote on it.
Go ahead.
Why? Because we really don't know what we're talking about from ORCAN and the Humane Society and EarthKind, eventually, we are gonna go out for bids. There's, there's no doubt about it to me. Or RFP, or RFQ, or whatever you wanna call it, we're gonna go out, okay? Why can't we go out now, so we know what we're talking about? We're gonna get in a study session, and we don't even know the dollar signs.
Here's why, that's what we have to have the study session about, what are we gonna go out for bids for? How's it gonna affect our labor agreement? So that's what the... We'll have a study session soon.
Okay, okay, I got you.
Very soon.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Can I again ask that I get as much information as possible so that I can look at the numbers, look at the areas, and so I know what we're, we're looking at?
Absolutely.
Can, can, can you give out your email address, if you don't mind?
Sure, there's, you can call the department at (313) 791-3497. You can also send an email to thewordordinance@CI, like Charlie Igloo, dot Dearborn, hyphen heights, dot mi, dot us. You can also go onto the City of Dearborn Heights webpage, and you can navigate to the citizens' online concerns, and you can enter the, the information there.
Director McIntyre, thank you. The next item on the agenda is from Assessor Foucault, a resolution to establish dates and times for the 2016 March Board of Review.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kozinski?
I move that the council concur with Assessor Foucault's request and recommendation for the March 1916 Board of Review dates.
Is there support? Support by Councilman Barry? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the, from Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, resolution to repeal Public Act 269.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton?
I move city council approves and adopts the proposed resolution to repeal Public Act 269, it's outlined in 11B.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I do believe there's a, a stay on this law, if I, you're correct.
Yeah.
In fact, in fact, there's been new legislation that's been proposed, and, in fact, I got a, a copy from State Representative Heisey. I think it was approved six to one, I was looking for it right now. I think the proper motion would be to support that particular legislation, although the only thing I'm a little bit concerned about, and Chairman, you know this as well as I do, I don't know what else is in that legislation, but there was an, there was an injunction against what is referred to as the Michigan gag order law, and that was issued by U.S. District Court Judge John Corbett O'Meara on February 5th, on Friday, and so the judge is not, the judge is not gonna be influenced by the resolution, but I, I think that the, if we were gonna support legislation, I think it's the legislation that was, came out of the committee that Kurt Heisey is on, I'm looking for it right now.
Maybe the local government. Yeah, just for members of the public, the issue is this, so the legislature passed, and the governor signed, a law that prohibits cities, school districts, for 60 days prior to an election, spending public money, publicizing, for example, a request for a millage increase or whatever. So a federal judge has stayed the, the enforcement of the ordinance, but it's, it's still law, but it still has passed, so there's Kurt Heisey, our former Assistant Mayor, who's now in the Michigan Legislature, and the representative from Plymouth, has contacted the mayor about changes to this ordinance, but it would, for example, if a school district has a bond renewal, it prohibits the school district from distributing that information about that bond renewal. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I'd like to comment as the maker of the motion. So, in this letter, I cited Michigan Municipal League, which of course is the representative for the best interests of municipalities and townships and other organizations, including Michigan Association of Counties, Michigan Township Association, Michigan Association of School Boards, Michigan Association of School Administrators, are urging us to repeal. Now, I have an email from Michigan Municipal League that most of you should have received, if not, it's good to be on their mailing list, says, and the mayor had cited this, as you probably know, on Friday, U.S. District Court Judge John Corbett O'Meara issued an order granting preliminary injunction on a section 57 and 3, in parentheses, of Public Act 269. This is great news, of course, because it is a gag order, we're talking about limitations and First Right Amendments. However, it says also last week, the State House Elections Committee passed House Bill 5219, an attempt to fix the language of this public act. The bill was amended to remove the 60-day window, that's what they've have outlined. However, Sim, or, excuse me, MML, Michigan Municipal League, is asking you to continue to insist that you repeal...
The entire act.
The new act, Public Act 269. They urge you to do the same because it's too vague.
Right.
So with that being vague, and being the question of your First Right Amendment rights, you know, and it's a gag order, and, and I wanna share with you, the municipal... you know, and it's a gag order, and I want to share with you, the Municipal Services Committee for MML, I serve on that committee, and there was discussion, and it was interesting that many city councils would not even allow public comment 60 days prior to an election because of the sheer opportunity that residents, you know, you ask questions, right, about a ballot question, and we'd be in violation of that public act. So therefore, I have concerns about that.
Mr. Chair?
Any further discussion?
Councilman Musket. I, I want to apologize to Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton for bringing that up. I didn't mean that we shouldn't support it. I support it 100%, but I just wanted to add there was a gag order put on it and I...
Injunction issue, right.
An injunction issue. And I, and I totally support the repeal of Public Act 269, wholeheartedly. It just takes away all our rights to do anything we want to do. Well, it's been moved and supported to adopt the resolution to repeal Public Act 269. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Go ahead, Councilman Kozinski.
The signature is limited to the council members for this order. I suppose I'd invite the principal officer of the city to join in on this.
Yeah, I've already, in fact, been in contact with both our state representatives and our state senator, and I can assure you that they're in complete harmony to the resolution you're passing. But I would appreciate the invitation to also put my name on the, on the resolution. And maybe the treasurer and the clerk might want to also.
Clerk might be interested, too. Also, is there an intention to circulate it amongst the other communities adjacent to ours?
I, Mr., uh...
Or is that, is that wasteful because of the coming, coming issue?
No, I, I think that's very helpful. I will also tell you that at the DCC last week, a similar resolution was passed and all the mayors and supervisors at that meeting passed it. And I would assume that at Friday, this Friday CWW meeting, a similar resolution will be passed.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add also, I think when we sent it to Michigan Municipal League, they put that on their website as a resource. They do that for all resolutions and all ordinances. So other municipalities can look at that and see it available to them as well, if I'm following what you're asking.
Clerk Percevich, don't we normally make it available to other communities? If we pass a resolution, we send it on to other communities?
Um, yes and no. It depends on, on the issue. Many of these issues that have been brought up as of late that seem to be of interest county statewide, we do share them with other clerks.
Like, for example, fireworks. I think we did that with fireworks?
Yeah, we share that, yes. Some that are just parochial to us, we wouldn't share. But, yeah, we, we do share these wide range issues with other...
Thank you.
Communities in Wayne County.
Great, great, thank you.
And if the, the other officers choose to sign on, touch with the city clerk.
Mr. Chairman, the word of education of the quest for past this resolution last night.
Any further discussion from the, from the mayor, council, Clerk Percevich?
I would just like, I guess, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, who's the author of this, to let us know exactly who you want this sent to and, and, not necessarily in the motion, but after sometime in the next week so we can...
All right, we'll do, thank you.
Work according to your wishes, please. Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the business license renewal for High Grade Steakhouse at 25240 Ford Road in Dearborn Heights.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I was asked by the clerk to put this aside for a future meeting. He has some, what do I say?
Outstanding issues?
Yeah.
Is there support to table this?
Support, Mr. Chair.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. That ends the regular portion of our meeting. So first of all, any announcements from anybody here, any members of the council or the mayor? Any announcements?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just briefly, Angela Keller, who is our WDHT Cable Studio Video Producer and our camera person, and you see her at all of our council meetings, she'll be leaving the city to take another position later this month. We're going to miss you. We wish you well, and I know you're going to do very well in future career choices. Just give her a hand. And I don't see many audience, but he comes quite often. But Terry Guerin, also known as Rhino, and the professional wrestler, and he's heading up another benefit match. This time it will benefit the Etzel Ford High School Boosters Club. Event will take place on Wednesday, February 24th, beginning at 7:30 PM. Take place at the school, which is located at 20601 Rotunda Drive in Dearborn. Tickets are $7 for adults and $5 for kids. If they're purchased at the door, they will be $10 for adults and $7 for kids. So, and then lastly, for especially those that are not here, who might also be interested, but on Tuesday, February 16th, 7 o'clock, this council chamber, I've worked with the council chairman and we put together a program to give an update on the Ecorus Creek Project. So I would invite the residents who are interested in that project in an update. Normally, that meeting is generally closed, but we've allowed the participants, the neighbors, and I, and have left that meeting open. The reason is we are in litigation with the County of Wayne as it relates to a Chapter 8 petition that we filed and it was successful. And the attorney, Patrick McCully, and our attorney, Gary Miatki, will be there to provide, as well as the engineers. And the other, we've invited Congresswoman Dingell's office, U.S. Senator Gary Peters' office, are both our state representatives and our state senator and our county commissioners. So we've tried to invite everybody. And we invite you at 7:00 and I think that's going to be the only thing on the meeting agenda that night, but you're more than welcome to come and find out the, the most current update on the Ecorus Creek Project.
So that'll be February 16th here?
Here. Next Tuesday, here at 7:00 PM.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
If I may share an update on behalf of the Planning Commission. We had a Planning Commission, or they had a Planning Commission meeting on February 3rd, and the discussion was used car lot ordinance amendment. And we had quite a few residents show up, so I thought, you know, I called the chair to say, okay, we're, an update that I could share with you this evening. So after hearing from the residents as well as the Planning Commissioners, they are moving forward with the wording for the amendment. And we want to invite the public to attend a public hearing for this wording. And that will be on March the 2nd, the first Wednesday in March at 6:00 PM here in city council chambers. So hopefully we'll have some residents attend. And again, it's a public hearing, so you'll be able to comment after they do the initial reading. And then once it's approved by the Planning Commission, it will be referred to the city council for that final approval. Okay?
That's the used car lots amendment.
Any other announcements from anybody at the table? Clerk Percevich?
Yes, we sent out the ballots for the presidential primary last Thursday. Please give it till this Thursday to receive it. We have issues where, they were all sent bulk. Husband got it one day, wife got it the next. So if you would give us till Thursday, if you do not have it, call us Monday. Call us right away that you do not have your ballot, okay? If you have applied for an absentee ballot. Also, please be aware that when you return it, you must sign it. If you do not, we will send it back. Excuse me, back. So you can sign it. So far, we got a couple hundred back and only one, so we're doing good on that. Also, I was informed today by the Crestwood School District that there will be a Crestwood School election in May. So those in precincts 5 through 18 will be looking forward to voting also in May on a Crestwood School issue. If you have any election questions whatsoever, please call my office at 313-791-3432. That's 313-791-3432. And if I could just say to Angela, you will be missed. Thank you for your cooperation with my office. Did a great job and, and good luck in your new venture. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Any other announcements? Any department heads or Treasurer Riley?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have a question for Deputy Chief Badalow. Do we, what are we doing with smoke detectors? Are we still, or do we install them at no cost, at a request? I know, I know we did a long time ago. Are we still doing that? What's the, what's the story?
That'd be something I'd have to refer to the Fire Marshal's office and we could find out. In the past, I believe we've had grants that have paid for smoke detectors. Citizens have been able to come up to the fire station and were given however many they would require.
Okay. I'll call them and talk to them.
Okay.
Thanks.
What's the number there at the fire department? If anybody has any questions about smoke detectors or any giveaways, what's the number they're asking?
The main number is 313-791-3650.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? John, Treasurer Riley?
Hello, good evening, everybody. Just a reminder that the winter taxes are due next Tuesday, February 16th. They can be paid. You can mail it back in the return envelope that comes with the tax bill. Please make sure that it's postmarked on the 16th. Or you can come to City Hall. We're open Monday through Thursday from 8 until 5. We will be open this coming Monday on President's Day. A lot of people believe that we're closed, but we will be open on President's Day. You can pay them after hours by dropping the envelope with a check, with the bottom part of the tax statement into our night deposit box, which is just to the right of the front door of City Hall. That gets used quite often. You also could go to our, the treasurer's page on the website and you pay with a credit card or e-check, but there is a convenience fee to pay in this manner. So again, the taxes are due on February 16th, which is a week from tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Library Director McCafferty.
Hello, council chair and mayor. Just wanted to talk about a couple of upcoming events. This Wednesday, February 10th, at Carolyn Kennedy Library from 7 to 8:30 PM, we will be hosting brewmeister Jeff Oliver as we delve into adventures in home brewing. Learn about the essential ingredients to make beer and the necessary equipment to make your own brew. So get something brewing in your home today. Next Thursday, February 18th, from 7 to 8:30 at Carolyn Kennedy Library. Join us as we learn about kanzashi. Fold fabric pieces into artful silk flower pins under the guidance of Barbara Africano of the Material Girls Shop. All supplies will be provided and registration is appreciated at 313-791-3800. That's all for now. Thank you for your time and see you at the library.
Mike, thank you. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hold on. Hearing none. We now come to the public comment portion of our meeting. Please come up to the microphone in the podium. Direct your comments to the chair, that's myself. Try to keep your comments brief and please try to direct what you want the city to do or what action you want to see the city take. You just need to state the street you live on and if you're in Dearborn Heights. So if anybody has any comments, please go up to the podium.
I would just, I, sorry, my name's Carol Stewart. I'm the president of the Southwest Dearborn Heights Neighborhood Association. I live on Neapolis Street. You know, all this discussion about the vector control program could have been solved for $75 per certified person if they would have just taken us up on our advice. Dearborn gave them complete control over any training they would need. Also, they would need, they would also help them with being certified if they had any questions. This was done four years ago and we're still talking about it. Dearborn Heights, when we, when I called the city on, the Department of Agriculture on the city about using bait boxes that were leaking poison, there was a cease and desist order immediately. The mayor did not know about it until he read the order that the Agriculture Department gave him. I mean, this, this is so ridiculous. It could have been done four years ago. Your people could have been certified. Certification isn't the big all-know and be-all. You've got to have training to do after you're certified. Would you like to have a kid that just graduation, graduated from college work on your car? I wouldn't. And I'm sorry, I don't want to see anybody's children or animals or anybody get hurt because this city didn't do something they should have done four years ago. Thank you.
Any other comments? Come up to the podium, state your name and what street you live on. Go ahead.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. My name's Jacqueline Turner and I live on McDonald Street. These are questions concerning those notices that they put out on the houses, mainly for Jack, because this one house, ever since a family had moved in there, it's been a problem with their trash and they're finally out. And now in, on February 2nd, a seven-day notice was posted because there's trash in that backyard piled up all the way to the yard, windows. It's all along the neighbor's fence. It's in the garage back there, which is vacant. The houses now had to be boarded up because it was also broken into five times, even though there's a bunch of garbage all inside. It has rats, it has possums, it has raccoons, it has mice, and then there is a cat back there that has an injured paw. They did bring out a thing to try and catch him and apparently he's been in there before and he wouldn't go or whatever, maybe, I don't know why he wouldn't go in there, but he's still hanging around. I've still seen him. So I want to know, since today, a new notice of seven days about cleaning that up, how many times do we do this? Another question that's part of this is, this property was under somebody that is in Nevada. He sold it to somebody else that was in Nevada. Now we hear it's been sold to somebody that now lives in Florida. How are you going to get these people to come here and clean this up? How many of those seven-day notices and how long is it going to take posting those when this property is clearly an eyesore? There are neighbors that are now threatening to move out because of this particular house. How many of them are going to be posted over and over again?
Our, our department procedure is to post a seven-day notice. We do a follow-up seven days later. We post another seven-day notice. And then if it's not in compliance, then we issue a ticket. And I explained to you, we did come out and get one cat. We set a trap.
They did get one, okay.
We don't set traps during the winter. It's just not a good idea because of the cold weather, but we were trying to catch this cat that was, had an injured paw. But unfortunately, he evaded us and, but we got another one, so...
Okay, yeah, I knew there were two there.
This particular property, as I mentioned to you, has already moved from one owner to another owner. After the 14 days, if it's not complied with, then we'll write a ticket. If they don't comply with a ticket, then we'll get a court order to clean the property up and, and then charge the property owner.
Okay, so those, basically 21-day notice?
Not 21, 14.
14, okay. Doesn't start over just because a new person took over the property?
One at a time, please.
Okay, so it, from the last week's and then the one that was issued today?
Correct.
So by next Tuesday?
It goes right to a ticket.
Okay. And then if they don't comply or pay that, what happens then?
That we get a court order to clean the property up and we've sent, we sent a company over there to clean it up and then the property owner will be billed for it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Councilman, first Councilman...
Oh, go ahead. I'm outside.
I'm outside.
Councilman Musket.
I guess this question is for Mr. Miatki. Is there anything we can do to speed up that process? I mean, 14 days, I mean, we see the problem that everybody's having. And, you know, you give a ticket seven days, you go back out seven days. This owner lives in Florida. He's going to get a letter, he's going to sit on this thing. When it gets this bad, is there anything we can do to speed up that process legally?
Well, there is a process that can be followed with the mayor, under the charter, but basically it's a much more involved, much more expensive process. I've only done it in one instance when Mayor Canfield was mayor, having to do with some property on Cherry Hill where they were regularly having sales that they were not supposed to have and all other ways of trying to deal with things did not work. And I can tell you, it was much more expensive because I had to be involved in the process to move at that kind of speed to address the issue and to make sure no one ended up screwing anything up in terms of how we ended up approaching it. So that's a possibility, but, and the process we're dealing with right now is, I mean, just like we dealt with the issue on Van Born after I ended up getting involved with Jac and we also worked with Leonard Stewart, was relatively expensive. It was more expensive for me to go out there and end up dealing with things. So if the ordinance enforcement department is, is dealing with it in this way, it might not be perfectly fast, but it's probably more cost-effective.
Let me, let me ask you this then. In a situation like this where this has been a constant ongoing thing, could we cut that down from seven days to four days and then speed it up that way?
The difficulty is you might be able to cut down on some of that, but you need to be uniform in how you do things. And then you have to realize that you're also going to have to do that for other neighbors and everyone. And that's where you potentially have a difficulty, otherwise they say, well, you're discriminating against me for whatever reason it is that they might say, which we might not even know about because they are an owner who is outside the state of Michigan and could care less about what ends up happening. So we need to follow the same procedures or should follow the same procedures that we would follow for them, that we would follow for other individuals, including our own residents who may be on vacation for two weeks and might not know about something that's on their, their property and then, you know, before we go to a ticket. So that's probably the best way to end up addressing your concern is to say, look, we've got to be uniform in how we handle things. And the seven-day, seven-day type of regimen that Jac is talking about has been considered to be fair and reasonably fast under the circumstances. Again, the one time I ended up doing the charter procedure for, for nuisances, it was, it was very time-intensive on my part, but, I mean, the issue got resolved, but again, it was not, it was far more expensive than, than how we do things through the ordinance enforcement department.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and your street you live on. Go ahead.
My name is Philip Yanko. I live in 7646 Burn, Dearborn Heights. And I have the problem because, we've been living there for 60 years, okay? And back of us, I mean, they built another house about 20 years ago and those people, they didn't cut the grass for almost four years. And that's where we get the rats and everything. I complained over here four, five times. I guess, you know, you, you guys send a letter over there and everything else, but you know, they still, we still have the problem. So tell me how we can do it, you know? You know, we, we, I mean, we've been living over there, there's my wife over there, before Dearborn Heights come in. We were living, you know, when there was Dearborn Heights.
Township.
Yeah, Dearborn Township. And then I have a problem with a water bill. All of a sudden, they raised it to 178, 185. And I was paying, you know, $110. I'm like, what's going on over here? I mean, they can do any, any number they want or what?
Regarding your water bill, you've got to.
I did.
Water Department and, you know, they'll, they'll.
I told them over here and they told me to come over here tonight to complain over here. So I don't know. That's what they told me, the lady over there.
What's the address of the house where they haven't cut the grass in four years?
Pardon me?
What's the address of the house where they haven't cut the grass in four years?
Well, I don't know, it's a back of us, you know, it's on Grayfield.
Okay. I'll meet with you after.
You guys have the address and everything else for it, so.
We'll, we'll, we'll see what we can do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Jac.
Yeah, I'm aware, he's, he's one of my neighbors. I know exactly what house it is. We are dealing with it. We've had, it's a property that we've had contractors going to cut the grass. They had to do a big cleanup last year where they hauled stuff out of there. He also owns the property right next door. It's a rental property.
Yeah, the Chinese people, they have a big restaurant over here in Telegraph and Ford Road, I think.
Correct.
Okay, I mean, they're millionaires and how they can't clean the backyard?
Correct.
I mean, we've got three-quarter of an acre in my house and all the time I keep on asking you guys, please send somebody.
Yep, we're, we're definitely have that one on a regular follow-up where we're looking at it on a regular.
I complained about 20 times since then, so.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. Councilman Musket.
Jac, how long does it take you to get a court order? And then once you get the court order, how long does it take to clean it up?
Okay, just to clarify, are you talking about property cleanup, like grass and?
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
Well, that we don't need a court order for because we have a program to cut the grass. So if they don't.
This garbage that this other person.
Well, that would be cleaned up on a regular, our contractors are set up that when they go out there, because we wrote a grass violation, the first time they visit the property to cut the grass, they remove any debris that's on the property. That's why you've seen like a lot of high bills for artistic and for eager beaver. It's because they're doing, at the same time that they're cutting grass, they're doing major cleanups on a lot of properties throughout the city.
And this is a vacant property?
No, it's occupied.
What you said previously though, you said, we, we're going to go get a court order for this one house that had the garbage lineup and a cat and everything. You said you got to get a court order, then you got to go and. You got to follow due process. So how long would it take?
Well, you have, you have to follow, you know, the process, what the law requires. And so you have to get a, you know, to get a court order, you usually go to a show cause and then from the show cause, a decision is made from there. Gary could probably speak to that.
The gentleman is right, you know, that's same, same people owned an Exo house.
So we'll, I'll, we'll see after the meeting and Director, but he's aware of the problem.
So how long does it usually take to get a court order?
Usually depends on when we can end up getting the person in. Normally, like, we have things scheduled for basically a one-week turnaround, but you have to give the person normally the time that they're allowed to respond. Then if they don't show up, then we get a default. And then when we get the default, we ask for the court order.
Councilman Della.
It will vary and it's also up to the judge. The judge could potentially find that he feels that the matter can be put off three weeks from now or like the situation that we were talking about on Van Born, it was one week.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Della.
I had a question for the Director. So based on this gentleman's assessment, it's been four years that this has been going on. And I'm just using this as an example to the possible South Heights area situation. So if, if somebody's a resident there and there's that same exact type of problem here with the grass being long for four years, with garbage, et cetera, et cetera. Obviously, all of them are blight issues. And four years with whatever ordinances that we have in place, we can't stop whoever this family is.
Yeah. I think, you know, in this particular case, what was happening is that they would cut the front.
Yeah.
And at that time, the contractors would come around, they'd see that the front was cut and they wouldn't check the back. And so we, we, we got that process changed last year, last summer. You know, we, I had a meeting with the contractors and said, you can't just look at the front. You actually, you got to get out of your vehicle, make sure the back end is cut as well as the front. Because a lot of people do that, particularly landlords with rental properties. We have a lot of properties where the front yard is great and then you get to the backyard and it could be two or three feet high, so.
And also, just as a point of clarification, I have seen it in the real estate business. It's not that uncommon to have people own a property for whatever their particular reason is and put down an LLC address out of state when in reality, they still live either in the city or in the metro Detroit area. So on paper, it looks like they own it in Missouri for whatever, either tax advantages or whatever reasons that they've got in mind. But yet, they still live here locally. So I just want to point that out. In the event, you know, we presume that they don't live around here and most of the time they do. It's just a matter of doing a little bit more digging.
Right.
To find out where exactly they live and not out of state.
They're millionaires. I mean, how they can't take care of their.
Well, and the, but the, there's got to be someone in the area that tends to the property if there's a problem, so, but.
No, they're local.
The ordinance department is aware of the problem. They've been out there and, and we'll talk after the meeting. Please state your name and your street you live on.
I'm Dolores Swan. I live on McDonald. I have two issues I'd like to talk about. One comment about our vector and our ordinance problem. I live on the southwest side and we have a lot of renters now. The problem be is, part of the problem is, these tenants are not being held responsible for anything they do, for any of their messes that they make, for the dogs that they don't clean up after. Their landlords might be notified and they'll find, eventually get out there, but the tenants don't, aren't they held responsible for anything?
Any, any homes that's a rental, make sure, call into the mayor's office or the ordinance office or both, make sure it registers as a rental. They've got, the owner's got to get a certificate of occupancy in the name of the renter.
That was taken care of in court just last week.
And then, you know, that's, that's when, when, when homes are, you know, rented out and, and they're, the person who lives there isn't the owner, not responsible, a lot of times, there's, there's a problem.
Well, yeah, but the tenants are not held responsible for the mess that they make. That's my point. Sure, the landlord is responsible and he'll probably have to come out and pay and clean it up and pay it, but why aren't the tenants?
The tenants, the, the, the person there will get a ticket if they're violating the ordinance.
Oh, the person that lives there will?
Sure.
Oh, well, that's news to me. Okay.
And if the landlord goes to court to get the run paid and they don't have a C of O in the, in the renter's name, they don't, they don't get any run. They don't, they can't, they can't get the run paid, so that's a requirement.
Well, I'm talking about the blight. I'm talking about a neighbor that's been in, in the house for three years, never cleans up the backyard. Okay? And I'm, you know, I'm just tired of it. Okay, the second issue is a suggestion, how do you go about it? I think we should have a traffic light right at this corner of Telegraph and George so we can come across here without worrying about if we're going to get an accident. Is there a lot of accidents at that section?
No.
No? Because when we, we have to come up, from the south end, we have to come up, make a U-turn and come down George. I mean, what would be the process of requesting a traffic light?
State of Michigan, since it's a state road, they're the ones that put up stops.
Well, I understand they would do that, but couldn't the city request that too?
Well, they're 24.
Because that's our way we get here. That's how we get here to the city hall.
They do a survey, they got a.
Especially because you have, you know, Ford and you have the light before them and you have house.
Yeah, on Telegraph, that's a state issue. It's a, it's a state highway.
I just figured our city might have, might have a little pull by making the request.
Anybody else come up to the podium? State your name and your street.
My name is Arthur Taylor. And I live on Culver Street.
Pull the mic up closer to you, we can't hear you.
Arthur Taylor and you live on?
Culver Street.
Culver.
I got a, a warning about a couple of vehicles that I had parked there. I moved them and got them out of there. They're not junk cars, they're a car that you would drive as well. I got a plow truck, my own personal truck with a blade on it. I went to court and they told me that I could not have a plow on my own personal truck. It's not for hire, it's for my driveway and I'm too old to be shoveling the driveway unless there's somebody who wants to come over and shovel my driveway. So I do it with the plow truck. And I'd like to know why they're harassing me for this now.
Well, Arthur, two, two things. Number one, if you got a ticket, that's.
No, I didn't get a ticket. I got a ticket to go to court on the four cars. I went to court on that. The judge abolished that and then they brought up a truck, four-wheel-drive truck that's got plates and insurance on it with a snowplow on it in my driveway. It's not parked on the street. And I just went out and took pictures of vehicles with snowplows on them, commercial in the street parked.
But that, that's a court issue. This isn't a court. So if you get a ticket for violating an ordinance, if you.
But what is the violation?
You, you go to court. That's not, that's not our issue. That's not for us to answer.
What is the violation?
And just as you've heard, you know, the, the ordinance director saying that we have to follow due process, the city has to follow due process and, and if you disagree.
Well, is there a law against me having a truck with a plow on the front of it in my driveway?
It's, it's not, not our issue. It's not for me to answer.
But who do I ask?
It's in our jurisdiction.
It's not in our jurisdiction.
Who do I ask?
If you disagree with the ticket, you go to court.
I've been here for 50 years and I've come here to find out what's going on and you guys can't say nothing to me? Well, thank you very much.
Police, anybody else come up to the podium, state your, your, your name and the street you live on.
My name is Susie. I'm Todd. I live at Academy Street in South Dearborn Heights. I have a lot to say, but I'm just not going to say it. However, while you are studying the problem of the rats, the rats continue to eat our wires, they continue to go into our houses and garages, but hey, we've already reiterated that. I would like you to consider the company Erratico. It is the vector control company that District 7 schools use. That is from Mr. Lazar himself. If you don't believe me, give them a call. They are really basically a rat control company. The ones that the ordinance department recommended, the one, is termites, bugs, that's not going to do us any good at all. We need some rats. And as people have come up here and said, they have called the ordinance department over and over and over again and nothing's being done. I run a website. People write into me all the time. What's the use in calling the ordinance department? I called them for a whole year and they never did anything. Whether it's true or not, I don't know, but I know there's a lot of frustration out there. And while you are studying, meanwhile, our properties are getting eaten up by rats. My whole area, we don't have dogs. Our houses, I'm not saying it's the greatest, but they're clean, no rat would find a place to live there. We have to pay for our, for these sloppy neighbors to let their houses go to hoot because the ordinance department, for whatever reason, we can't get them to, to clean up their property. You're going to put a gun to their head and say you got to clean up the property? They're not going to do it. And you know why they're not going to do it? Because this city is known as a patsy where anybody can do whatever they want and they're not going to be, they're not going to be accounted for. Wait, let me finish, please, and then I'll leave. Councilman Kozinski, for 20 years.
Please direct your comments to me.
Okay, well, it's, he wants to be called.
Please direct them to me and I'll.
Council Chairman Conston. Councilman Kozinski said that it's not fair that people should have to pay for rat control if they don't have rats. Well, you know what? In my part of the city, we get flooded all the time. But you know what? For 20 years, I paid taxes to have a CSO to prevent flooding in the north end. I didn't benefit a thing from it, not a thing. We in the south end are tired of paying for things we're not getting. All we're asking for is a rat control company to come in here for a couple months, catch up, and then the ordinance department, if they finally pass their tests, then they can take over. How do we know when they're going to pass their test? This could be, it could go on for another year.
Like, I think what Councilman Kozinski said, and I, I agree with him, that you need to tax, so if you, on your block, and I, you live a few blocks from me, on your block, if, if a particular homeowner, the house is vacant or he's got a lot of trash, he doesn't take care of it, we ticket him. If they, if he doesn't clean up the problem, the city comes out and cleans it up and it goes, just like cutting the grass or everything else, goes on his tax rolls. But why should the whole city have to pay?
Why should I have to pay for this north end to have, to have flood control?
That's, that's the issue, but.
No, it's the same.
We understand your point.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something here? It's, and Mr., and Mayor, please help me with this. with this. It's been my knowledge for all the years that I've been on this council that all the past mayors, including the present mayor, anything that has to do with the Rouge River or the Ecorse Creek, we all share in the cost. We all share in the cost.
Good. But do you share in the flooding? No, we do.
Whatever, whatever the repair is going to be eventually, we will.
Eventually, Councilman, Council Chairman Conston, per Councilwoman Horvath, I have no problem with that. I know there are people in the north end that have problems like we do too. However, for someone to stay, sit there and say, well, why should we pay for something that doesn't concern us when we're paying for something? That's not helping us on the Rouge River.
I think what he means though is that it should be assessed, that cost first should be assessed to that homeowner.
It's not working. It's not working. It's not working. The people that are here keep their houses clean. We all do. But yet, we have to pay for the rats chewing up, I had it chew up my car. Oh, there's Councilman Barry. Where are your signs? Okay, I'm leaving.
No, no, Mrs. Todd, what I was going to tell you was, everybody, Mrs. Todd, that is Mr. Kozinski's, that is Mr. Kozinski's opinion. We haven't seen a proposal or the numbers come through yet to support or not support an issue. I'd be more than willing to help with it, but at this time, we haven't seen the numbers to say just what they truly are. And if they're minimal, well, then let's go ahead and do it. But we can't speak on something we don't know of at this time.
We can't do it like that. It's a complex issue.
It sure is. When our houses are getting chewed up and our cars, I can't get, get to work in the morning because a rat chewed up my Williams.
I don't have a sign anymore.
We'll, we'll get it on right away.
I'm out. I know the sign business.
Suzanne, Suzanne.
Good evening.
I'm with you 100%. Hang on. And, and, you know, I go to the ordinance department or any other department and with the issues that people call me with, first thing that I'm told is they don't get the calls. I just want to tell everybody, if you got a problem, call them. We are like your last resort. You got to call them so they got it on record. Then once you put, and, and take down the day and time that you call. Take down the person's name that you talked to. I, I don't know what else to do. I mean, I'll take your phone, I'll be more than happy.
On my Facebook page.
But I'm just telling everybody, I'll take your calls, but, but I, just call. Please state your name and your address.
Zohair Alhah, 354 Rosemary. Boy, it's a hot night here. First, Mr. McIntyre, he's shorthanded. He needs more people to work with him. Don't ask somebody to write and read before you teach him the alphabet. He needs people in his office so they can do the job. They can go around and they can point out which houses, which spots need to be targeted.
There you go.
Okay? Second, and there is money. There is money in the city. Nobody can tell me there is no money. The city collected from the taxpayers 3.8 million dollars extra from the CSO for four years they were paying and nobody talked about it. They can't come up with the money. There are property not used in the city. They've been sitting for years and we took 1,000 lousy dollars on 1.2 million dollars property and we sat for a year and a half on it. Then the guy came and said, sorry, I don't want it. Keep your thousand dollars. Why, the city spent over $5,000 in, in lawyer's fees to write the contract. So there are property the city owns, we can sell them to fix this problem. Those are city residents, taxpayers. They pay taxes to serve me, you, everybody in the city, every corner of the city. Nobody can come here and say, it's not our problem. Yes, it is our problem, Mr. Mayor. If your house today has rats, I'll be more than happy to pay to clean it up. If your house is, have a problem, I'd be happy to pay my share. If tomorrow, some tornado came to the south end and 300, 400 houses go down, our, Mr. Badalu and his crew will go to clean up, the police will go to monitor so nobody steals. Who's paying for that service?
Everybody.
Is it just the south end or the north end?
There's three issues, three issues. So.
The issue is very clear. This is a problem in the city. You guys have been hiding for years. I don't live in the south end, but I feel with them so much. They deserve to be served. They deserve to be heard and let's stop this, let's talk afterward, let's this and that. Go ahead, get some quotes, do it as fast as you can and show these people, those voters, that you care for the city. You care for them as a human beings. We deserve, this is, city was a future right behind you. Let's make it city was a future. Let's give these people what they deserve. Thank you.
Oh, God, it's getting, so you got to fight to get up here. Okay, Mary Saputo.
State your name and your address.
Mary Saputo, Oakland Drive, Dearborn Heights. I just want to say just like three things, okay? Number one, it seems that the city can find money for a lot of things, but what we really need is more ordinance officers. You need to find some money to employ more ordinance officers and beef up that department because obviously, this is where all your problems are. Number two, you were talking about identifying an area to send out for a quote. Jack stood up here and said, when he wanted to know the areas where the rats were, he talked to Carol. Carol identified an area. So why can't you scratch the study session, get the areas from Carol, send it out for a quote? I don't know what the big deal is.
Mayor, I, I think what, first of all, I think what Jack said was, he has certain ordinance officers work certain areas. He can't do his job.
No, no, no. Jack stood up here and said that they were talking about the rat situation and he went to Carol and Carol identified areas where she knew the rats were and they went there and looked to see what they could find. That's what he said. So if you're looking for areas to identify, talk to Carol. She'll give you some areas.
I, I think what Jack was saying was, Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, that he can't have an ordinance officer who's working in area drop what he's doing and just concentrate on one problem.
No, that's not what he said, Bob.
And then run on another problem.
That's not what he said, Bob.
He has to do things in, in an orderly fashion.
All due respect, that's not what he said.
Jack, clarify.
Carol, is that what he said?
He didn't mention my name.
Yeah.
It's nice to have this conversation.
The reason I said what I said, and what I said was that I personally would like the kind of information that we got when the Southwest Association provided that information. So we knew a particular area, particular streets.
See?
When, when people say that hundreds of people have called, I'm just saying again, hundreds of people are not calling my office so that we can appropriately send people to respond to that. And I, again, Facebook, all that's great.
One at a time. Let, let, let the ordinance director speak, please.
Look, let me just tell you something. I, I, I don't know how things happened before I got here and I'm not going to speak about how things were run before I got here. But I will tell you that since I've been here.
How many years?
More than 100% commitment. I'm on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I take animal calls and then I call the appropriate person on call to come in. I've spent many, many Fridays driving around with the Southwest Association and looking at properties. We are committed to this. There's no, there's no way, nobody could come in here and, and say anything different.
And I agree with Jack because I, Jack knows I love him.
And Jack works Saturdays and Sundays. All of us have called Jack. He, he will drop whatever he's.
I agree with you, Mayor. You're talking on my time now.
Excuse, just let me just answer your question. Let me just answer, let me just answer your question though, real quick. Let me just answer. Mary?
Please, please.
I have a floor or not?
We're not going to shout out from the audience or the meeting's not going to.
Mary, I just want, I just want to clarify.
Can't go ahead.
Mary, I want to clarify what I said earlier is, I, I'm a little uncomfortable just sending a company out into the south end and saying, knock it out. Because I have people that call from the north end too.
You know what, Jack? That's only your opinion. The rest of us have a different opinion.
But it's not even, think about it from.
These people are fighting the rats every single day.
Yeah.
And they deserve to be heard.
But my concern, Mary, Mary, my concern.
Now, another thing, Jack, you know I love you, okay?
Mary, but let me just tell you what my concern is.
And let me say this to all the other people.
Please let him finish.
When I call Jack, I identify a particular problem. I have never not had the ordinance department respond to me, never.
Good.
And I call Jack or email him directly. I don't go through a council person. I go to Jack directly. Never had a problem. Okay? Now, one other thing was that Mr. Miyaki said, we don't know if we hire another company, would there be a problem with the unions? Okay?
There'd be an unfair labor practice, for example.
Okay, well, the city cuts trees, right? But yet, they hire a company to come in and cut the trees. I don't see the difference. What is the difference?
There could be an issue.
We have an agreement on certain types of job units and the union has agreed. I'm not saying that they would not necessarily agree with that in this particular case, but Mr. Miyaki's point, we do have to always go back because the union wants to protect that we don't subcontract out. So we're not, Mr. Miyaki's point was well taken, but we don't know that there would be an unfair labor.
Yeah, that's, you don't know that to be the case.
We don't know that at this point.
Okay, I just wanted to make those points, that we've already identified an area where the rats are. So why can't you just base your request for quote on those identified areas already?
That's what we're going to meet quickly about and talk about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? State your, your street and your.
Patrick Willis, 23440 Hanover. Questions on the Ecorse Creek. I, I asked this last year with the Rouge River cleanup. You guys volunteer for it and.
I didn't hear.
The Rouge River cleanup that you guys volunteer for, you take pictures, you get T-shirts, you help clean it all up.
Rouge, there's the Rouge cleanup.
There's the Rouge.
And the Ecorse, East, Ecorse Creek cleanup.
And that's what I asked. Are, they said that they had to put a project in to do that. Are we looking at that this year to do an Ecorse Creek cleanup?
No, we do it every year, sometimes two times a year, but there's no, no project.
When was back at Hanover, look, the creek back there ever tended to?
It's just, I was out there with Troy Brown and others just this last year.
It must have been a nice walk because it's full of brush, it's full of trees that are falling.
We were, we were out there and then the DPW was out there.
Okay. I called Trisha Dotson religiously.
Trisha Dotson.
Yes, from Wayne County, when there's a blockage. She comes out within two days with her crew. She clears the creek, she clears the flow, she puts it up on the bank. You walk the creek. There's trees in evolution that are regrowing, that are falling. There's one house, it's not the house, it's the property behind it, is full of brush. Why can't we do a cleanup? Why can't, instead of reaching out to the Rouge, which I think you guys are going to do again, tell me if I'm wrong.
You keep saying Rouge, you mean Ecorse Creek.
No, last year, you guys had orange T-shirts, you all participated, Lisa did too.
That was the Ecorse Creek.
We do both, actually.
Okay, then, then what part did we clean up?
We, we, but those are volunteers. So the, with the river, it's under the jurisdiction of the state.
Are we looking at doing a project for volunteers in the city to do that?
With, with the river, it's the jurisdiction of the state. With the creek, it's the jurisdiction of the county. The county gets paid money to keep the creek clean. The, the, of course, the Watershed Stewards run a cleanup every year. Sometimes we do it twice a year, but we're volunteers.
So you've got funding to clean it. Wayne County.
No, it's volunteers.
Wayne County owns the water, you guys own the banks.
We don't own, we don't.
You're responsible for the banks.
The Wayne County's, because it's a creek, not a river, they're responsible for the.
Okay, so whose responsibility is clearing the stuff on the banks?
Arguably Wayne County, but the city, the city helps out and does it, but arguably Wayne County.
Trisha says that, that all they can do is bank the stuff from the river, that they're, that that's not their property to clean up. They say, she says refer to the city. Two days ago, I talked to her about this.
So I, I'm, I'm not telling you.
I'm wondering, we, again, having flood issues.
Right.
Every time it rains, getting back to where's the grant, what are we doing with that? But nobody clears any of that stuff back there. It has, when the houses were built that you say shouldn't have been built there, the trees that started back in the day are still there.
They're up this big.
They're falling over. They're causing issues. They're causing, they're dropping on people's properties at times. Who's responsible for that?
Arguably the Wayne County. But the Watershed Stewards is a volunteer group. We do the cleanup every year, but we, and you're, you're welcome to come out this year. I'll let you know when it is, but it's a volunteer group. But that's under the jurisdiction of Wayne County. And I will tell you that the Friends of the Rouge or all the experts say, a log jam or anything like that, you're not supposed to touch. I disagree, but you're, you're not supposed to touch it.
If it's causing a flow issue, it needs to go.
It's, you're.
Plus, plus they had garbage. I, I, I have pictures I can send you that I, that I sent to her that she cleared. But again.
Been cleaning the creek every year for 20 years.
And those same trees are there, except they're leaning and they're falling and the brush is collecting and nobody clears it. What's going on with the grant?
Come, come next Tuesday. Next Tuesday is. Yeah, the, the, we're working on getting some federal money to buy up those houses that are built along Hanover like yours in the flood plain, arguably in the flood plain.
But our date was the end of January. This is February.
You're talking about the whole United States and appropriating that money and it's, our project is there with many others. So we're working on it.
But there's an update next week. At 7:00 PM.
We're seeing a hard time at Hanover Street. Now, as we're speaking about the rat problems, I don't know if you guys would ever take into consideration, rats, they love shores. And as if we go back to 2014 and when the floods started happening down in the south end, we came up with a resolution. Taylor and I think a couple other cities, as of Ramles, I can't remember, that asked, they were dumping their shores into Ecorse Creek. And we have asked the mayor if we can put some sort of stop for those cities dumping their shore into the creek. He said, no, we're not allowed to. As of becoming in the winter and the cold water, these rats are coming out of the creek and going to wherever they're at. There is no way we're going to come, issue a ticket or a citation for a property and tell them this rat came out of your house. Unless Mr. Miyaki can explain it to me in a different way. If you're going to issue me a ticket and you're going to take me to court, how are you going to accuse me this, this rat came out of my house? What, they're my neighbor's house? We're going to take the cat, oh, say you came out of Sam's house. Let's come up to a resolution.
Normally, if I may.
It's about time.
You're, you're talking about where a hole would be in the ground and then that's the basis for, for the ticket to end up being.
Well, so let's say the rat came through.
Ticketing a homeowner if they have, they have blight, rub, rubbish and, but I think you're talking about something a little different. You're talking about the flooding, water going into the creek. We can't control what communities upstream do.
And as far as the grant for the 13 houses in the south end, back in 2014, we had a meeting and didn't get us to nowhere. It dragged us all the way till January. Then in January, we came up to give us till the end of January. Then the end of the January, now we're coming to give us till next Tuesday now. We want to know till when.
Well, we're, we're going to have a meeting on the 16th and we're going to, like I said, it's, 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 our project is there with many others. So you will be updated on the status of the request for the grant on the 16th.
I mean, should we know? Like, is there any effort being placed on these houses or just like any other project, just like the rats or any other issue for the south end? We just put the application and let's ignore it.
Tremendous, tremendous effort. And the mayor talked with a former United States Senator and he says he can't, you know, go out and lobby. So tremendous effort.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Support, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.